We'd like to do this on Saturday, September twenty-third and Sunday, the twenty-fourth. The Historical Society would like to do their annual Boardwalk Art Show on August twentieth. And lastly, the Asbury Park Annual Beach Volleyball Tournament would be held simply on August fifth, from eight to five P.M., not the August sixteenth. Also, the mayor asked me to give a brief overview of recreation, so I'd just like to take a couple of minutes and do that. With regards to our summer camp program, we began this past Monday on June twenty-sixth, and we will run through August the fourth. As in past years, we have two locations, Bradley Primary and Thurgood Marshall. As of this date, we have two hundred and ten kids enrolled, and that number will go up when summer school begins on July fifth. So we've already surpassed the number of kids that we've had in summer camp last year, so we're very excited about that. Today was their first trip. Thurgood Marshall went to Funplex, Bradley went to iPlay. I'm also very excited because this year, we're going to be working with more businesses in Asbury Park. The showroom, Pink Elephant, Silver Ball Museum, Hot Sand, Cookman Creamery, Eddie Confetti's, Water Spray Park, so we're very excited about that as well. We were able to hire eleven youth, Asbury Park youth, to work with the summer program. And speaking of working, we have twenty-five Asbury Park youth that are employed at Six Flags. And of course, the issue is getting the kids to and from Six Flags. So the recreation department is providing transportation for these youth to go to and from work. And part of that money comes in the rodeo for recreation, so we're very fortunate that we had those funds to assist. The children who are working, they do pay a fee, a small fee, per week, because nothing in this world is free, and our children have to learn it, you have to pay for certain things. So they pay a small fee to get to and from work each week. And then when those funds come in, that goes into the Recreation Trust account. Other programs we're offering include the Summer Basketball League, swim lessons at the Boys and Girls Club, soccer program. The Lake House is giving us a free, week-long, summer music program for Asbury Park kids. And Summertime Surf is also doing a week-long surf camp for our kids, and that's free as well. The Water Park is open next to the middle school. It will be open through Labor Day, maybe longer, the weather's hot. And that's just a brief synopsis of where we are this summer so far.
Great job.
Nice.
Great job. Thank you, Jessie, and thank you, Eileen, for chairing that committee. And just because some towns have elapsed between school and when recreation starts, it's great that we start right away. So that's why I asked it to be announced today. And great job, especially getting twenty-five kids' jobs at Great Adventure and getting transportation back and forth where they can make money for school, so.
And that's the second year we're doing this.
Fantastic.
So we're excited about that.
One thing, you mentioned a Pop Warner?
Pop Warner?
Yes.
No.
Sign up?
Uh, yes, oh, yes, with the special events application.
Please let those people know, all right, that we're trying to help them. But if they keep on tagging without getting permission, then we're going to stop helping them.
Okay.
Or you'd like for me to do it?
No, no, it's no problem, Mr. Kendall, I can do that. We do have guidelines for tagging, so I'll remind them of what they are, because they are aware. I'm sure they just forgot.
Don't they have to get permission first?
They have to get a permit.
Somebody, and they're tagging every weekend. What's tagging is similar to what the fire department do with the buckets standing on it.
Oh, yeah, they've been out in the street.
Asbury Avenue, Central Avenue, First Avenue, that's what they do.
I will talk to them about those guidelines, Mr. Kendall. Thank you.
If you need me to be with you, I will.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alicia.
Review of this evening's agenda items?
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Resolution twenty seventeen dash two oh eight is the special events application. Two oh nine is a place-to-place liquor transfer for Johnny Mac. Two ten is...
I don't, I'm sorry, explain it to me, it's place-to-place?
It's just for their cafe license, so they can serve and, you know, use the cafe area. By law, you have to license the place, every inch of the place that you serve at.
And when you expand the size of an existing licensed premises, the process is what they call a place-to-place transfer of the license. So if you expand the size of the licensed premises, and what's being expanded is to include the outdoor cafe.
All right, thank you.
Resolution two ten is the local finance board application. The state asks us to make some changes, so this is just a review of the last one that was approved, the last meeting. Resolution two eleven and two twelve is refunds to two properties. The addresses are in the resolution. We'll make sure that they're on the title for the next meeting. Twenty thirteen is the performance bond for six oh three Lake Avenue and accepting maintenance guarantees, standard engineering work. Resolution twenty fourteen awards in our state projects to fourteen twenty-one Madison. Resolution two fifteen is for Natalie. We've already applied and received the grant, but we still have to go through the processes as a standard grant. Next one, next meeting, we'll have one that states that we're accepting the grant, but it's already been awarded.
So does this go to pay for overtime?
Yes, pays for overtime for police activity. Hold on, heading down, sorry. Resolution twenty sixteen is authorizing the acceptance of the CDBG block grant, CDBG grant for fiscal year twenty seventeen. It's approximately two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. Moving to the individual resolutions. Resolution twenty seventeen is the payment bills. Twenty eighteen is the appointments to the Sunset Lake Commission. I do not believe there's any change in any of the appointments names.
Nope.
Twenty nineteen...
Except that we're moving Jamie Nadel up from alternate to permanent member. That's it, right.
Twenty nineteen is liquor licenses renewals. I believe twenty twenty is going to be pulled from the agenda. Yes, council will be taking, considering this and taking action at a future meeting with regard to twenty twenty, which is the renewal of the liquor licenses for the Asbury Hotel.
I cracked it, it's nineteen. I cracked it, my bad. Yeah, it's nineteen.
And this is a typo?
Yeah, my typo, yep.
Never mind.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two are liquor licenses for Johnny Mac and Porter, with special conditions. Both the city staff and the establishments have reached agreement about what's to be done at both of these establishments. Twenty twenty-three is capital purchase, a vehicle for the building department. It's an SUV that replaces a seven or eight-year-old SUV. The old SUV is going to be dropped down to the COVID enforcement department. Resolution twenty twenty-four is authorizing embarking pay stations. We talked about this in the last meeting. Resolution twenty twenty-five is the MOU with sponsors for the city's bike share system. The transportation manager has secured the hundred and eight thousand dollars worth of donations for the bike share program. So we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule with this.
Wow.
Resolution two twenty-six is what was discussed at the last meeting, the change order number one for Sunset Lake Footbridge T and M. This is part of, this is the first and final change order to the contract, the additional work for Bird Construction, on time. As you remember, at the last meeting, the council authorized us to start pursuing liquidated damages after the final amount came in. So we'll be discussing with Bird Construction. Twenty twenty-seven is various easements and documents associated with the Michael Group and their project. This secures two easements. One connects both properties, and another one is in the upper corner, the Upper West Corner. And then, as we've been going through the final books, preparing the closing documents, we found items that hadn't been signed. There's actually a map that's in their deed packet that was never signed by the city, but somehow reported. So we're trying to clean up all those documents and get the closing documents ready. We're, should be closing soon, or having it due soon. Michael's Group and city staff have been pulling documents left and right, making sure that the double checkings we're generally doing is right. Moving on to introduced ordinances. Thirty-one is changing the terms of service for Sunset Lake Commission so that they actually are annual instead of intermittent here. Thirty-two establishes a handicap parking spot. Thirty-three is a right-of-way at seven hundred banks. Thirty-four is a general amending the traffic and parking regulations. And then for second reading, it is general licensing for twenty-five, twenty-six is amending the parking regulations again. And twenty-seven is for an area on Dunlue that we have no use for, there's no inherent value for, we want to give to the neighbors. That's all.
Any questions? Next.
Matters by the city council?
I have nothing at this time.
Just one item today. Michael's had a job fair, and a job fair for the Renaissance Project that's going to be on Springwood Avenue. There are a number of construction opportunities, so there will be applications available in the lobby of City Hall for subcontractors and also employment opportunities. And it's, the employment opportunities are available to anyone within Monmouth County, but of course, Asbury's Park residents get preference. So please come and pick up applications. These jobs are going to start within near time range, so it's an opportunity to have a job that's going to last for at least eighteen months.
No comment at this time.
I have a couple of things. So this weekend, the Environment and Shetree Commission and the Volunteers of Wesley Lake, okay, worked together to put up in the word A, the letter A and P, at the entrance to the footbridge into Ocean Grove, in the shape, you know, we use plantings, and then when you, I'm not describing it well, but when you look at it, it's A-P, and then you walk into Ocean Grove with rose bushes, right? And I was there planting, so I should be describing this better than I am. Anyway, it looks fantastic, so I want to thank those two organizations, they did a great job. And those of you who didn't hear, the Garden State Film Festival has come back to us, so that's really, really great news. And we are doing an initiative with the Downtown Merchants and the Chamber to provide free parking only in the Bang Zed Lot on the first Saturdays of July, August, and September from one to five. They're doing kind of a sidewalk sale where they're putting, I think, some of their merchandise out on the sidewalk. And anyway, the idea is to kind of revitalize the whole first Saturday. So from one to five in the Bang Zed Lot, there'll be free parking as a downtown business initiative to, you know, bring more people into town. That's it.
That's it? Let me start off with the bad, and then I'll go to the good. Just, I know we're going to get a lot of complaints about Steiner Place. Steiner Place is being paved by the city. We asked New Jersey Transit, could we pave their area? The city would pay for it. We've been asking this for close to a year. New Jersey Transit has constantly said no. Today, they put up signs saying no parking. So we went from, like, say, maybe twenty parking spots back there that affect a lot of businesses.
And residential.
Residential. We might have been better off not paving the street, for sakes. I mean, it was the worst street in Asbury Park, we paved it, and New Jersey Transit wouldn't give in one iota. And I was told I couldn't criticize them too much, because we knew them down the road. So I just wanted to let the public know, if you have any criticism about Steiner Place, the city offered to pay it for free, but it cost New Jersey Transit zero. We're going back to the way it was, with the bumpers there, parking the way it was. They said absolutely not. So if you have complaints, please ask, you send them to New Jersey Transit, not us. The good, as Amy said, the film festival, and then I want to thank our staff for doing such a great job in writing a grant for the New Jersey Transportation Alternatives Program for two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that we got for Main Street improvements. And in our zone, there were seventy-seven applicants, and only twenty-seven received money. So our staff did a fantastic job, and I want to thank the staff. That's all I have.
Matters by the city manager? Matters by the city attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
All right, at this time, we can recess until seven P.M. for the regular meeting.
Ms. Floyd, I see you.
Do roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Would everybody please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please? Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, I don't put notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coast and the Star Ledger on January third, two thousand and seventeen, and posted on bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Have a motion to open up the council meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second. Anybody who is coming up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please. And each member, the public has three minutes to speak.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm coming here dismayed about last week's master plan rollout, initial final copy master plan. As you might have been informed, on that very night was the high school graduation. The town was concerned, and I was concerned at that night, it's either see my nephews graduate high school, or come to the master plan meeting. This is a whole city that has concerns and wants to be represented. And when we do things like have such an important act done on a time in which most of the city, especially Asbury natives, will not attend, half this, most of the city was on that beach that night. I'm concerned, I'm concerned about in this meeting, no real plan or development for affordable housing was put to the floor or put in the plan. As most people know, that plan is what's going to happen in the city for the next ten years. And what I feel is that we've been ridding out of the city. We've been ridding out the city, and it's, at this time, the wall I know is, it's been done on purpose. We're one of the rare cities who've had money over the last decade to build and to do something about our homeless population, and we have not. We have not addressed the artists who are being pushed out. We are not addressing the culture that's being stomped out of our city. What makes us the coolest city in the country is being pushed out and dispersed throughout the country. It is offensive to the people who live here. It's not a black-white thing, it is a power thing. And I feel that in some ways, we are being corrupted. Like Lord Acton said, power corrupts absolutely, absolute power corrupts absolutely. And it's being corrupted. We live in a city in the last few years where I've seen splits and fights in a culture that's never had splits and fights. We've, Asbury Park has always been an open, embracing culture, and I've seen splits and divides cut into this culture here, this home and heart that has never been here before. We've had people come from all around, as Asbury Park was one of the original haven cities. And we've always been a haven for everyone, and now I feel that we're, that's being pushed out for different cultures, for different things, for different, people have arrived. Well, you've never arrived, until everybody has arrived. The persecuted has now become part of the persecutors. They're being ripped and tears, and it's offensive, and it's not my home. That's it.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to respond to that, not that Felicia has to respond. I was at the meeting, Felicia, and it was, and we taped it for APTV, so to make sure that people had an opportunity to watch it. And it was full of, full of information regarding inclusionary zoning, affordable housing, and live artwork space. So I'm not sure if you had a chance to watch it on APTV yet. You did see it? So then you and I attended two different meetings, because I saw that repeatedly throughout the entire presentation.
... So I did attend, and what wasn't really addressed was a fair and pre-oral rollout of affordable housing. Now, there is art space, now we spoke about art space in this, down Asbury Avenue and other parts, but there is kind of an industrial area, so that's kind of already people's homes. And it's already designated areas. And if we don't address a full plan that takes the whole city, then we're missing out on our opportunities to keep a piece of Asbury Park, the coolest city and the complete city that it's always been. And not a three hundred city, it's a twelve-month city.
Okay. Felicia, I just want to let you know, there's two other opportunities for input into the master plan, so at the next two planning board sessions? That hasn't been scheduled yet. Okay, so there's going to be two other sessions where we will encourage the public to come out and provide input once again, before, before a final draft is finished.
If I could find out at least a week ahead of time, so we can get people who are concerned, so we can get them here, because last night, just informing people that there were certain things that were suppressing, we had a full house schedule only in this very room, because it's a concern of the community.
Sure.
And there's a lot that are people who are actively concerned about.
Sure, so we'll, we'll have them scheduled, and it'll be posted on the website. I don't know how you find out your information?
I go to the website.
Okay, go to the website, keep checking on the website. Thank you.
Tracy, where, Springwood Avenue. One, I wanted to know about the software program that was, that was supposed to be unleashed, that talked about the quality of performance of the city's activities, and I thought we were supposed to have a rollout by June. Also, during the conversation in the last meeting, the city manager said that admins was zeroed out on the allocations of RCA money. I want to know, how many accounting systems do we have? And if he can explain, you know, what each accounting system does, and how we get each of that information over.
The performance measurement software started in May. It's on the website, it's, there's a page for it, and each department has its own subsection within the department, except for Public Works, which we've had a little bit trouble with the work order system. Just some issues just with street names. But every department is up, and we are still beta-testing some of the other departments and avenues that we're adding. So we started rolling out some of them in April, every one has been up since the beginning of May. And we have one financial software, it's admins.
So when I go to the website, is it, has one of those icons, or?
No, it's, it was listed on the homepage for a little while. If you just search for performance measurement, it should come up right away. It should be the first hit, I can double-check right now, but it's there.
Oh, and it basically gives a, create a data analysis of each, well, departments that you have online, right?
Yep.
Okay.
If you search performance, it's the first one.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I'm a little concerned about all the news I heard this week about our police. In particular, because I follow health care a lot, that you had one policeman, and on his insurance, he had his sister for a few years, I don't know exactly how many. I think you have to, you know, we're living in very hard times right now. You have to really check out people when they apply for health care for the city. You should see a birth certificate or a marriage license to see that they're a family. I mean, this, this is ridiculous to have your sister on a health plan and not know about it for a few years. I don't know whose fault it is, but whoever. And the other thing is, police are supposed to drive around and be our eyes and ears. Why do I have to call up when there's a box truck on my street for three days straight, when I live in a residential neighborhood? I think it's very unfair. And then, to add to that, they come to your house and tell you what they're doing. Who wants to see them after that? They know that you called, right? You don't know who's living in your neighborhood, but they should be able to call up code, they should follow all the codes. Do they know the codes? Do they know the ordinance? That no box trucks are allowed on the street overnight, and never the last three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then they can't do anything about it when you call them. Oh, no, we have to tag the car, they have to do this. Everybody has privileges, but the people that live here. It's very unfair, and I think you should really scrutinize every single person that's on health care in this town. Because I hear very strange stories that people just get married to be on our health plan because it's so great. And I'm not going to name anybody, but there are people that are just on our health plan just to get our, they're on, they get married just to be on our health plan. It's ridiculous, but that's the way it is today, because health care is so expensive. We're spending six million dollars a year on health care. Now, I mean, that, that, it's just outrageous what goes on here. When they ride around, they're supposed to see code, they're supposed to see illegals, they're supposed to see everything, but they don't see anything. You have to report it. And especially on weekends, and especially now that it's summer. It's, it's just outrageous, two weekends in a row, I've had this problem. And it's not the young cops that are here, I don't know if they're cops or specials or whatever they are, but they really don't know the ordinances, and they should be studied. People live in here illegally, summer rentals, in and out, I mean, this is what's going on now. And it's up to the police department to help us. We'll help them, but don't come to my house after I report something. I mean, you don't know who's living next door to you right now. That's it. So are you going to make sure that people are married and see their, their marriage license when you give them insurance? Don't you think that's a...
It's required by law. What, the officer in question committed fraud. He committed a crime. We've, we've been trying to work with the prosecutor's office to get the money back that the city paid in premiums. That is up to the prosecutor's office. But under the health care laws, we are required to provide marriage licenses, social security cards, to prove, to prove that an event has happened that changes the health insurance. So everything you're saying is actually required by law and by opinions from the Division of Treasury. It's done. But when someone commits a crime, we don't know that they commit a crime, because they're committing a crime, until they get caught. So if someone provides a fake document, we don't have the ability to find, you know, if this is true or not. But you are supposed to, and you are required, to provide that level of documentation.
So how does his sister get insurance? It's as the...
By fraud, by a criminal act, and that's why he's lost his job, and he's losing his pension. It's because he committed a crime. That's it. He submitted false paperwork. It's a crime. That's why he's no longer here, he's resigned.
Well, maybe you can ask for another piece of ID, too. Like when you have to go get your driver's license, you have to present five IDs. I mean, you're going to have to do something, because insurance is too expensive today. And you know that, right, Michael? Michael?
What?
You know that, right? Six million?
The city's health insurance is too expensive. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Beth McCarthy, First Avenue. I first would like to ask all the council members and the city manager, how many times a month do you have to call Public Works to get a street sweeper on your block? Each one of you, if you could answer that first.
Do you, hold three minutes, so you don't lose...
No, I want to know that first. Can you answer that, or no?
I couldn't even hear the question, I'm sorry.
How many times a month do you have to call Public Works to get a street sweeper to come on your block?
I've never called.
The rest of you?
They don't come to Mike's.
I've never asked for one, if they come, they come.
They don't come.
Okay, well, I've been asking for twenty-five years. We haven't gotten a street sweeper sign, so they, you know, they don't come, I have to call, I clean up that stuff. I clean up that stuff. Now you have, we're close to the beach all the time, you have all that stuff out there. Oh, I did get a sign, I thought you guys were working on it. I did get a sign in front of my house now. I have to pay to park, get a permit if I want to park in front of my house now. I'm sick and tired of cleaning up all this mess from all the beachfront people. You have done nothing, you told me you were, we're working on it. Nobody's ever working on anything. So I want, starting this Tuesday, I want that my street cleaned. I clean enough other days down there. I want one day a week, everybody else gets it in this town. And if they can't figure out how to move the cars, they can move them for parades, for, for running things, for drinking bashes on the streets, they can close off all the streets. I want my street cleaned. They can come down with the blower and blow it off and clean it, like I'm on a big corner. Took me an hour and a half. Nobody else cleans on the block, everything washes down. I had one month, the United Methodist Church, the water was running for one month. Like Rita says, nobody sees it. We're calling, calling, called environmental, there was water out there, the mosquito, everybody on the block's calling. Nobody sees it. Until we had that big rainstorm and then somebody else must have got it all the way down their block. I'm sick and tired of cleaning up around here. I, I don't mind doing it, but I'm not doing it when I don't get a street sweeper. And I have to call them, aggravate them, aggravate my neighbors, say, try to, don't park your car. You know, really, it's ridiculous. And you bend over backwards for every other people that want to come into this town to do stuff. I don't, can't say, oh, I'm not going to pay my taxes because, you know, this year I'm doing something else or blah, blah, blah. So I want to know what you're going to do about this. I want somebody there on Tuesday, and if they have to bring a blower like I have to do and go around all these cars and clean it up, then that's what they have to do. So what's the answer, you're gonna, is it going to happen or what?
Oh, one answer, good.
I'm emailing our Public Works superintendent so we can pull up the GPS stuff on the sweeper to see where they've been. And if they've been missing your block, we'll, sorry.
Baloney, they don't come, there's no signs. And let me tell you something. When I found that, that's, those people out in my front lawn, I called Public Works, asked them what that, nobody knew what was going on. Little later, the guy comes back and I go out there and I said, what's this? And he says, oh, it's for permit parking. I came in and talked to you. And I asked you, whose idea that was? And you said the Parking Commission. And I said, who's on that? You didn't know. I went downstairs and got an Oprah request and you're head of that committee. And you don't know who's on it.
Hi, good evening. Nadine Brown.
Better not close up any other streets in front of my house.
Sunset Avenue. I'm, I'm here to complain about the trash cans and the rickety fence across the street from me at the Sunset Landing. I would appreciate it, I've been in touch trying for the past year to get somebody from Code Enforcement to come and do something about that. I shouldn't have to sit on my porch and look across the street at garbage cans, barrels, and a rickety fence and overgrown weeds. I pay my taxes in this town just like everybody else. I just called Code Enforcement on Monday. I just drove past her on the way from work and I see they look like they maybe cleaned up some brush or whatever that's on the curb, but the raggedy fence is still there, the garbage cans are still there. And if they can come and complain about a business on Main Street that I was watching on TV and two weeks later you can send somebody down there to Code Enforcement to enforce, hopefully they did. I'm going to drive by there on the way home to see if that business, what is it called, Medusa's or something? The new business that opened that had the trash cans and the fence out front? I heard Rita and Jerry complain about it a couple of weeks ago. And two weeks later you said you were sending out Code Enforcement? Well, I'm going to ask you, could you please send out Code Enforcement to Sunset Landing to do something about that trash in front of my house? Because I don't want to sit on my porch and look at trash cans. I shouldn't have to. It's been over a year now and nobody seems to want to do anything about it. So I'm asking you all to help. If you don't mind. I don't know who you need to call, who you need to text or email. I would appreciate it.
Got it, thank you, thank you. Michael, he'll take care of that?
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the clock to change.
Michael, that's Ms. Cummings, who I emailed you, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Laurie.
It's still like one minute and fifteen seconds. I probably will be quick. Lori Ross, West Side Community Center, 115 DeWitt Avenue. I'm here for, the primary reason why I'm here today is because I never got the crime data, particularly as it relates to the shooting. Ma'am, I'm glad you mentioned the fence because we actually had a fence that was taken down by nefarious activity on DeWitt Avenue and people jumping the fence. So I'm glad you mentioned that because we're doing our best. We've got someone here that's actually a blessing to us, a property facility manager. And we're addressing all of our issues. But I never got the data that I was supposed to get just with regards to the number of shootings. And it's not just about the shootings. It's really trying to figure out what is the city's crime strategy? How we can participate in that? How we can get messaging out to the community and protect ourselves as much as possible? Because it is in fact a war zone over there. I didn't say it, I'm not the only one that said it. But the reality is, I have information from one property address over there by the West Side Community Center. And I'm not worried about myself as much as I'm worried about these children that may be innocent victims of the shooting. And one address alone has about fifty violations, which includes shots fired, rape, controlled dangerous substances, vehicle thefts, burglaries, animal calls. And I know we have an issue with dog kettles or whoever's selling dogs. Well, I just want you all to know, if you don't already know, that pit bulls, there's a lot of pit bulls that don't make a sound. I was told anecdotally from somebody from the state police, that's what, what is happening is the animals' vocal cords are being cut out so that when they are sick on a competitor drug dealer, you don't hear it. So it is in fact a lot of issues that still continue to persist. And I never got the basic information. I'm surprised the council, the mayor and the council are not kept apprised as to what's going on. But like I said, I can be in the backyard at the center, which I am many times, in the back fence. I can see dogs, they're running around, but you don't hear them. And it was somebody from the state police that said, Lori, you better stay out of there at night. You better be careful because this is some of the, if you're seeing pit bulls that are running around loose and you don't hear them bark, it's because they're cutting out the vocal cords. I don't know that, but again, I'd like to know what is the city's crime plan? Crime, you know, strategy to address the crime? And I'm trying to figure out why I just didn't get the email with regards to even the shootings that seem to be unreported. It is in fact a war zone over there.
At the last meeting, I said I would, would have it for you this, this meeting. And myself and the deputy chief haven't been able to coordinate our schedules to go through everything. We just haven't been able to connect. But hopefully, I can give you the information that you want.
Mr. Cabby Bianco, in all due respect, you said you would get it to me a week. But again, I'm surprised that the council is not kept aware. Again, I'm an animal lover, I don't happen to have one now, my dog died several years ago. But again, when somebody from the state police is telling me that they're cutting vocal cords of precious animals and they're running around and they're being used as a weapon in the drug trade, that makes me concerned as well as possible victims being shot because of some of the stuff that's going on, that's all.
Thank you. Can you check with Deputy Chief Kelso to see if the state police have made that report to her? And if they haven't, why not? And I think right now we're about to hear some tremendous news. I see Mr. Hobson, Mr. Gibson here and we're all going to be standing up and clapping in a second.
First of all, I'm Greg Hobson. I'm chairman of the Asbury Park Housing Authority. Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Quinn, council and administration. I actually came to report that we just signed the contract for a hundred and four affordable units, which is considered Boston Way Village. As I promised you, I will come give you the news first. The contracts are signed, we will be moving ahead momentarily. Michael, thank you so much for all of your support. And special thanks to my good friend, Yvonne Clayton. Thanks for all your support. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, and thank you for having a special meeting. You're going to go celebrate. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Elder Hobson. Congratulations. But I'll be coming to see you. All right.
Demo, demo in July?
Demo in July.
Okay, okay.
Did you say? August.
Good enough.
Congratulations.
That's wonderful news. So council, Curtis Moreland, 115 DeWitt Avenue. Mostly you know my face. I've been in this town for a while. I've had family and city government here. And I've been around for a while. So, 115 DeWitt Avenue, I'm going to make it real short and sweet. Elizabeth Avenue is a trap house behind us. Let's, let's make no qualms about it. It's a trap house. If you don't understand that definition, Google it. It's a trap house. We need to address these issues real quick. Because it's going crazy over there. I'm there every day. Every day. And I'm going to be there every day. And you're going to see my face more. And I'm not bringing rah rah, I'm bringing change. Regardless if y'all are going to help support us or not, it's going to happen. Regardless. Because that's just what's going to happen. But it's a trap house on Elizabeth. We need to handle that. We need to handle that. So, it's, it's real simple, I'm not going to put people's information out on the street. It's a trap house on Elizabeth. We need to take care of that. Real quick. The landlord knows what's going on. He don't give a rat's ass. It's a trap house. So, away from that. You're going to start seeing things happen over at the West Side. You're going to see things moving, things happening. Like I said, not a whole bunch of rah rah. I'm going to move very quiet with or without any, any funds from the city, any monies, whatever. It's going to happen. My foundation has grant money that, God bless her soul, my sister acquired from me before she passed away. So I have funding, I have pockets and connections. So it's going to happen. What I am asking you all to do, come stop by, visit, sit down, have a conversation. All of that other stuff that went in the past, it's in the past, y'all. We can't do nothing about it, all the rah rah is done, it's over. It's a new day, starting today. And I know many of you on that council board. Y'all know me personally, y'all know me as Snoopy, not as Curtis Moreland. So it's a whole different level. So I'm asking y'all, come visit, come have a sit down, see what we're doing, understand the plan that's, that's going to be put in place for facility improvements and programming that's going to be going on. We're going to do the summer food program, the meals for breakfast and lunch. We're going to start out small to get stuff rolling again, but we already been approved. My director of that program got certified today, yesterday, went to Red Bank, took the classes and all done. So I just want you all to, to come see what's going on, have a sit down. It's a new day. That's all I'm saying, it's a new day. And we need to handle that, we need to handle that.
Hold on, man. Are you saying that you're a member of, on the board now?
I'm not on the board. I have a private nonprofit that is being housed now at the West Side Community Center.
Hold on. I'd like to talk to you, we, uh, sit down and talk to you?
Mm-hmm.
You and I? Because I'm in that area all the time checking.
So, that's all I ask, y'all.
Okay.
It's a new day.
I'm telling you. All right, I will get with you and we will talk.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Connor in Nebula, 1218 Sunset Avenue. I wasn't going to get up today, but my neighbor did come, Nadine, that lives at 260, 220, 220 Sunset Avenue. And I live at 218. And the Sunset Landing, I'm just diddling, supporting what she, what she shared. It's been a long time that garbage cans have been out in front and a raggedy gate or fence or whatever. And it's been a long time. And it's like, it really needs to get resolved. Not only garbage cans, but oil cans, which is dangerous. It's a health hazard. And people come, when they're in their restaurants, they come out the restaurants and they look at the ducks and stuff like that. If someone is smoking a cigarette, it could be a hazard, I mean, it could be a real big thing. So it's not a little thing. And I, I really pray that you guys really take it very seriously. It's not pleasing looking out of your, you know, sitting on your porch seeing it. That's one thing. But the safety issue with the oil, that is my most biggest concern. Because it, and, and she's been doing it for a very long time. And please, please, take it seriously and resolve it before someone gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. You got that address?
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scrannell Longbrand. Once again, thank you for the, creating the budget committee. I think that was a very good idea. So Felicia was correct about relocating people. Because they knocked down many ratables along the beachfront, those garden apartments. But they were ratables and we lost the taxes. Because some of those ratables would pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. I don't know what they give now as vacant parking lots, but that's what happened. You guys have given me a lot of things that I have asked for, like GPS and different things, you know, losing the health benefits for the old council and things like that. Well, I still like to see a timetable on the beachfront, on the redevelopment. And every project that we go forward should have a timetable. I really think that should be a priority. And you need a timetable for Convention Hall. Those panels have been missing three or four years. That cop had probably been made into other ornamental things. You need to get that building straightened out. I can't believe there's nobody from the Espinon, because I had a lot of crybabies called me up today to say they wanted to talk about the noise at the Asbury Hotel. But I guess it can't be that important to them because they're not here. But they wanted me to bring it up to you guys. So if you know about, about what I'm talking about, that'd be really helpful. I don't hear the noise, Rita doesn't hear the noise, or I don't hear the complaint. Now, with the GPS that I've been asking and the decals on the vehicles, I would like Michael to tell me how many vehicles we own, how many we pay for insurance, how many have decals and how many have GPS? Because then we could see what's going on. Because other towns have GPS on all the vehicles. And if we have vehicles running to South Jersey or North Jersey, we should know how many times they stop at Home Depot or ShopRite and things like that. You know, when they're talking about Elizabeth Street and other neighborhoods that are bad, why don't we have license plate readers right there so we can see who's coming and going? And that way the cop had the upper hand on what cars are running around. And we should be matching them up with Neptune and other cities and see what cars are the runners. So we can catch them in Asbury Circle on Bangs Avenue or Route 35 or Route 66. So we don't always have to have the scene in Asbury Park where we look like we're the crime center. Let other towns pick up the cars and other towns. So if we had license plate readers, we should be pushing for that. And then Happy Forts July to all you guys. I appreciate that. But could I get an answer about the cars for the next meeting?
We have about a hundred and sixty-eight cars. I just pulled up our, I think a hundred and forty have GPS. And we're just waiting till we get the budget passed in September to finish the rest of them.
Do you mean to put the decals on them?
The decals don't have to go on every car. There's actually rules about what cars can and cannot get decals. Obviously you don't put a police logo on an undercover car.
No, I understand that.
For certain cars, we've been using the talics, uh, things to, our decals. So all the cars are shop practice as far as I'm aware, we booked it at the beginning of the year. Uh, we had a fixed asset company come in and review everything also about six weeks ago. So, yeah, we're in good shape with that.
And can we talk to other town about license plate readers so it doesn't look like we have all the crime here?
We have license plate readers, there's certain data that is shared, there's certain data that isn't shared. But we do do what you're requesting.
Okay, thanks a lot, Happy Forts July.
Same to you, Jerry, thank you.
And Jerry, there was an announcement made before you got here that the resolution related to the, there's a, there was an announcement at the workshop session before you got here, the resolution related to the Asbury Hotel is tabled. That's why the Espinon's not here.
Hi, Ernest McNolly, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. I'm actually the person behind Elizabeth Street, quote, citizen investigation. That place is, is something that belongs on America's most dangerous. And it's right next to a place with children. It's beyond belief what goes on there. I actually had the code department in there. And it's, it's stated that it's owned by two people that live in, I think in Ocean, husband and a wife. However, they're using it as a four-rooming house, rooming house. So I send in- So, I send in code and zoning, and the person in a jolly fashion tells the inspectors, "Oh, th- these are my lovers. I'm, I'm not married, I'm certain lifestyle, and these males are my lovers." And they just write it, "Okay, fine, so you can stay." It exists today. Now, a person in there that's a good friend of mine, as a photographer, actually reported the crime in this building. And when the police showed up, they arrested my friend and put him in jail for fifty days. They accused him of the crimes that the crackheads in there were actually committing, and they arrested my friend. I didn't find out he was in jail until fifty days later. He's a diabetic, he's a veteran, and he wound up, I had to go and get him out. It cost me fifteen hundred dollars to get him out, and I brought him to the hospital where he stayed for over a month. And he had part of his foot amputated. He deserves that. Then we go into court in Asbury Park, and all the charges against him are dropped and found to be felonious. And the people who accused him are these crackheads, and that's the way it happens. And, uh, uh, look, we're beyond the point where this is sensational. In three minutes, you can't do justice to what's going on in this city. It is a horrible crime scene. It's the fourth most dangerous place in New Jersey by violent crimes FBI statistics. And, and, and yet, this council, this mayor, this city manager are involved in Twilight Zone things. Who cares about a parade? Who care- I don't care about anything. I care that I live here. I'm a victim of violent crime. I was almost killed. I was an attempted robbery victim walking on Park Avenue near the judge's house on the way to Main Street, and you can't get anything. And when you say, "Well, check with Kelso," well, check with Kelso, check with Salerno, they did nothing for the city. They do nothing. How does someone work, twenty-six seconds, how do these people work nine to five? They're driving our city cars. They do nothing. They know nothing about crime. You can't reach them. They cover everything up, and look what's going on with Neptune. We have German, a fugitive, police officer. How many years was he on the force? All of a sudden, we find out he's a bad guy? Sixteen years he was here. Sixteen years, you know? We need more than three minutes.
Advil, if you want to talk, it's now.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I know, but last time, he, he got shut out, so...
Advil Robinson, two twenty-five Third Avenue. My concern was, we had some, um, workforce people came down. I sat with the city council manager. They came to introduce some, um, some pro- some pilot programs they want to introduce. I never got any information back on that. I was wanting a response on that. Also was concerned with the new Boston Way project. They had an email that was sent out. We really all didn't get it. It was supposed to be the twenty-fifth. I wish you appreciate to have more outcome with the applications. And also the beach project down there, they're starting to hire people. I was one of the first to go to, to Fields and also to the guys that was introducing the, the hiring process. Uh, not on the list at this time. I've been circulating my information to them. I just wanted some answers, you know, the job, um, process with that at the beach, the Boston Way, and also the pilot program that, um, me and the city council, um, manager sat down with the people from the workforce development camp to speak to us about two months ago.
There was a job fair today for the Renaissance Project.
Yeah.
And some people showed up, but we still have applications for subcontractors and for employee, employers. The application will be on the front desk and city hall, but I have some that I can give to you tonight. The eleven oh one, we're still negotiating. There's going to, there are going to be jobs. We haven't started... With eleven oh one, they haven't started the apprentice programs and the internships yet, but that's starting. They're just starting to bring in the heavy, heavy, heavy equipment. Um, Boston Way, they just made the announcement tonight that it has been approved and demolition will start in August. I don't know what their projected dates of hiring people are, but the Renaissance Project, they're starting to hire now. And they expect that the, um, groundbreaking will be the end of July, beginning of August.
So, like I said, I did go down there to the beach. I filled out the application. I went to the programs that they had. They had a list available for all the contractors that did do their own, did get first bids for self-care, for cleaning up, the cement. Those guys would be down there first. So, I'm just wondering, is it a process to go through y'all or is that just directly through them?
At this point, directly through them.
Okay, cuz I was on the list. They said they emailed me. I was at the beach working at another area, but I was concerned with that construction cuz it could lead me into a career, so I was just wondering how that process went. But it's definitely just with them.
At this time, and like Yvonne said, once they start their workforce initiative, which we made part of the project, then we'll be more involved in it. There'll be much more information out as far as apprenticeships and jobs and opportunities. Uh, Boston Way, check with Greg Hobson or Danny Gibson. If you need a phone number, I'll give you the phone number. Uh, they, they were just here, like Yvonne said, and... They passed the, the resolution tonight, uh, so Boston Way is a reality. They're gonna knock it down in August and then start building. I know they put out some paperwork a month or so ago looking for people too. So, I'm sure they haven't hired anybody yet. You can go there.
You can, I'll go to that meeting.
Okay, the, the, there's, okay, good. Uh, so, anything, we'll get you this application.
Okay.
Either at the end of the meeting or you just, you want, you're coming out?
And I just wanna say to you, try not to get discouraged. Some things take a little bit more time than others. This is a new process, and we talk, you know, when you come by the house, we talk every day or every other day or something. But try to, try to hang in there as much as you can, alright?
Good to see you.
That way you don't have to hang around.
Yeah.
If you have anything to call.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you later.
Thanks. Motion to close?
Move it. Second.
We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. Executive session minutes, June fourteen, two thousand seventeen. Workshop minutes, June fourteen, two thousand seventeen, and regular session minutes, June fourteen, two thousand seventeen. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Consent agenda, resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh eight, resolution approving special event applications. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh nine, resolution to approve place-to-place transfer for DB Ventures LLC, Johnny Mac. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two ten, resolution, the city of Asbury Park making application to New Jersey Local Finance Board pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon three dash one at SEC and previous approvals by said board. Two thousand seventeen dash two eleven, resolution authorizing a transfer and refund of overpayment made in error on a property, block loca- block thirty-seven oh three, lot five point oh one, and block thirty-seven oh three, lot five point one oh five. Resolution two thousand seventeen twelve, resolution authorizing cancellation of refund municipal tax sales certificate due to titled, uh, transfer title for block ten oh five, lot one. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, two thirteen, resolution, the city of Asbury Park releasing performance bond for six oh three Lake Avenue and accepting their maintenance bond. Resolution two thousand seventeen two fourteen, resolution approving award of contract for a regional contribution agreement for fourteen twenty-one Madison Avenue. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two fifteen, a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application for two thousand seventeen Cops and Shops Summer Shore Initiative Grant Program. And two thousand seventeen two sixteen, resolution authorizing the acceptance of community development block grant for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Would anybody like any of those resolutions moved off tonight's agenda?
Uh, yes, the recreation one. I think the city manager has something to say about that.
Uh, we're gonna add the, the request, uh, for, uh, police officers for the pop order.
We're gonna do what?
Add a request, uh, for, for police officers at the pop order. We're gonna, we wanna be able to talk to them to see if they're, if that's at their expense.
You're talking about the sign up?
Yes.
At the sign up?
Oh, it's the sign up.
Uh, recommended that they pay, um, pay a police officer to be there because of situations that's going on now.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Want to individual resolutions. The first one is resolution two thousand seventeen dash two seventeen, resolution authorizing the payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase order seventeen dash zero zero nine nine seven. Can I have a motion to move, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Uh, resolution two thousand seventeen two eighteen, resolution authorizing appointments to the Sunset Lake Commission. Most of these are reappointments. Patrick Rayling with a expiration date of six thirty nineteen. Mark Axe, expiration six thirty nineteen. Randy Moore, expiration date of six thirty nine, two nineteen. And then Jamie Naidau has been moved from an alternate member to a regular member with an expiration date of six thirty two nineteen. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Sorry, missed ya. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen to nineteen, this is the resolution approving two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen liquor license renewal. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two twenty, which is renewing two ten Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal, which is also the Asbury Hotel, has been pulled from this evening's agenda. Next will be resolution two thousand seventeen dash two twenty-one, a resolution approving liquor license with special conditions to DB Ventures LLC doing business as Johnny Mac for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen licensing year.
Move it.
Second.
Before the council takes a vote on this matter, is there anyone here from the public that would like to be heard on the renewal of the liquor license for Johnny Macs?
I would. Then please approach the microphone. I was kind of like, it's not restricted. Yes.
Ernest McNally, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. I am more than adequately and intimately involved in observation of Johnny Mac over the years. Uh, there's problems with, in my observation, over-serving, overcrowding. There's no parking. They're coning off seventy-one. They're blocking the handicap. They're blocking the two-hour parking. They're using the two-hour parking for themselves all day. If you look at the crime statistics on Friday and Saturday, what the city of Asbury goes through to support this business is beyond belief. Resources are pulled from every quadrant in Asbury in addition to the two, four, or six privates that have been hired that basically are paid by these organizations, so they have no motivation to really stop what's going on because, hey, that'll be the end of overtime. And when you're the lowest-paid, worst-performing police force probably in the state of New Jersey, you need that overtime. And I filed some Oprahs. Johnny Mac has no permits for anything he's doing there with that parking. He has two driveways that he uses for parking. State of New Jersey, you can't use a driveway for parking, and you can't especially cone it off. So, I filed the Oprah. Guess what? Got no zoning variance, got no permit, has no nothing. All he's got is Johnny Mac, which, from my observation, he operates like the mayor of the city. I mean, he's involved with ten, twenty thousand dollar donations for political things. He runs political campaigns out of there. There's, uh, uh, law enforcement drinking going on there that I observed firsthand and, and, and more. For me, I was at a planning meeting and, and the architect made a statement that said, "Isn't it great what Johnny Mac is trying to do with that block now with, with..." What's the, what's the latest Mac we're having now? Baby Mac on the corner? What's the new Mac? We got Johnny Mac, Kim Mac, Joe Mac, G- I think on the corner is Mary Mac. And so, he's showing this rendition, and he's saying, "It's wonderful, you know, when people stop at the train and they look at that block, it's so symbolic of Asbury, what this businessperson has done." Are you kidding me? That's a dump. It's a rat trap. It's a fire trap. It's nothing but crime, drinking, drugs, violence. They have weekends, people with bottles, breaking bottles over each other's heads. They threw Lieutenant White in uniform through the plate glass window. That's not the first time somebody went through the place glass, plate glass window. And what I find most objectionable, that's the political campaign center for most of the places in this city. As a matter of fact, when this whole group was sworn in, at the end, it was, "Drinks for everybody at Johnny Macs." You know, can you make this up? So, I would say, anything Johnny Mac wants to do, the only thing he could do good for us is move out of this town because the, the, the draw of resources to keep that business going is inordinate. It's inordinate. It's beyond belief. And what does he pay? Property taxes like anybody else. I'm on the north side, north end. I'm near killed and, and crime, and every time, like when I was near killed, what was it, Fourth of July at midnight? You tell me where all the police cars are Fourth of July at midnight. They're at Porta, they're at Johnny Macs, they're at Bond Street, and they're at all these other gin mills that are just crime scenes. And they're, they're, in my opinion, they're killing Asbury. They're killing us. We can't walk at night. We can't get police protection, and these people are held out as, as heroes, like the, what they're doing for Asbury. Look, if you trace Johnny Mac's history with fifteen bars, every place in New York, wherever he's got him, the neighborhood wants him out. He, he's a menace to those places. And, and when I report this, by the way, he and his, his crew of bouncers think they have the right to come up to citizens, like, "You can't stand here. You can't walk here. You can't take a picture of this illegally parked car." Are they kidding me? Where are we, Guatemala? I don't know if I left anything out, but my answer is no. I, I say approve him for nothing, not one thing. And, and I feel, I feel that we should be able to have lawyers here for anything he tries to do. I mean, he almost knocked down that white building in the back with those undocumented workers. You, you see the bill, what we went through with that? And, and then, uh, Vicaro knocks down the dentist building by mistake without even cordoning it off, and they laugh. I mean, when was the last time anybody checked the capacity at this place? You know, there is a capacity. So, what does he do? He come up with flammable curtains to let people smoke while they drink. Then he's got standing propane heaters which are illegal. Eh, you can't get a fire marshal in there except to collect ten thousand dollar checks. And by the way, Johnny Mac gave a ten thousand dollar check to the fire marshal in some capacity. I'd like to know what that went for. It shouldn't be. He shouldn't be. Thank you. Sorry.
I can't beat Ernie, but, uh, Main Street, that's, that's a disgrace, the way it looks. We're gonna do Main Street over and we're gonna have Johnny Mac sitting there with that place the way it looks? It's, it's really not for Main Street. I don't know what it's for, but it's not for Main Street. Main Street's supposed to look better than that. And, and you took away his parking lot, you let him do that when we, when we need parking lots. And what has he got in there? A beer garden? What's he got there? Everybody wants to know. I mean, it's, I don't know, I can't beat Ernie, but just my personal opinion, it's a disgrace that it's on Main Street. I don't know where it belongs, maybe nowhere, but you, you can't let somebody operate like that. You just can't. And, and he does it arrogantly. If you even look at him cross-eyed, he tells you, "Oh." I mean, like, it's just unbelievable what that place is like, and everybody that passes it says the same thing. What is that? And, and if that's what you want on Main Street, when they're gonna do Main Street over, I don't think so. But that's all I have to say, and I, as a resident.
Local.
Well, actually, before the council votes, if I could, Mayor, just take a moment and let the public know that in addition to the existing special condition that previously applied to the Johnny Macs liquor license, which requires that seventy-five percent of the floor space shall be dedicated to food service, there are an additional seven new special conditions that the council with this resolution will be imposing upon the liquor license with its renewal. Those seven separate special conditions include... Those seven separate special conditions include the hiring of three off-duty police officers on specified days, and additional special police officers, all is set forth in the resolution, and there are provisions relating to hours, and everything is set forth in the resolution, but I just wanted people to know that there are additionally seven new special conditions that are being imposed on this license with its renewal.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Mayor, do you want me to read them?
No, yeah, you mentioned three.
All right, no, I'll go through, I'll, I'll, fair enough, I'll go through each one of them. The first one, the licensee shall hire three off-duty police officers on Fridays and Saturdays from Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend, including nights before holidays from ten thirty P M. through three o'clock A M. If a substantial weather event is anticipated, which will likely cause a reduced crowd to patronize the tavern such as a hurricane, the tavern may call the police department at least two hours before the shift to request that the third officer not be required to work, which final decision will be decided by the chief of police or their designee. The second one is the license shall hire two off-duty police officers on Fridays and Saturdays and nights before holidays from ten thirty P M. to two thirty A M. from the weekend after Labor Day through the weekend before Memorial Day. The third is if requested by the chief, the licensee will provide camera footage from security personnel who wear GoPro body cameras if the footage is available at the time the request is made. Number four, the licensee shall employ only techniques of alcohol management certified bartenders and/or ensure that bartenders attend the next available such course. The next special condition is the licensee shall place additional temporary barriers outside of their entrance slash exit to deter patrons from jaywalking across Main Street. The barriers shall be placed on the sidewalk by the curb line, not in the street, not later than ten o'clock P M., and shall be removed not later than three o'clock A M. on Friday and Saturday evenings and when special events have been advertised or larger crowds are expected by way of example the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving, Memorial Day weekend, Fourth of July, Labor Day weekend, the Zombie Walk, and the St. Patrick's Day parade. The next condition is a representative of the licensee and/or their security manager shall meet with or have a telephone call with the chief of police on a monthly basis during the first week of each month. And the last new special condition is the chief shall have the discretion to relax the foregoing conditions after consultation with and approval of the mayor and council and city manager. And those are the additional special conditions.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Those, those things are excellent, they've been, I've seen them for over a year.
No, these are new ones, Ernest.
What, the private police are out there all the time, what's new about it?
It's now a condition of the liquor license. If they violate it, charges can be brought against the liquor license before the evening.
What I'm saying, I, I don't think, at least for a year, I've done an intensive observation and study, I don't think they've ever not been there. So why are we saying that, well now you, you have to-
Additional men and additional hours were added. If you wanna get last year's and compare it to this year's, you'll see the difference.
But, but, I, look, every, everyone knows, you go in there, there's no register receipt, uh, receipts, there's no A B C going in there. There's a, there's a capacity that's violated. I mean, it, it, it looks, you ever see like when somebody drops a cookie on the sidewalk in the summer and all the ants come running? You know? Imagine like if you said, okay, ten ants, you can have the cookie, but imagine two thousand come, that's what that place looks like. It's a fire trap, it's gonna kill somebody. It's imminent, there's no question about it. The thing is, it's considered the imminent watering hole for government, police, and everybody. I don't understand how the police, who have had this baby since it opened, are, are put, it's like Dracula in charge of a blood bank. What are the police gonna do? They're part of it. They're in there most of the time, watering hole. You know, they get specials on parking and drinks and, you know, it's nothing new. Why, let's get it out on TV. Let's do something about it. These things are cursory, that really means nothing. The man needs to be checked for over-serving, number one. The thing about food, everybody knows that pizza thing is a joke. Nobody goes there for pizza. They, it, when they hand you a pizza, they throw them in the garbage. It, it's only so that, that they can meet this requirement. You ever taste that pizza I heard? It's like old shirt cardboard, it's terrible. They're in there for tequila and who knows what else they're sprinkling in these drinks. The people that come out of there are so dangerous, and I've been in the most dangerous places in the world, and I gotta tell you, the people that come out of that place, even the police are in fear of it. What, what, what does this all mean? Why, in other words, what this means is, okay, the chief has the ability to relax this, well, how about putting in that the chief has the ability to, to kinda do the opposite?
That's what he did.
Who did?
The chief made the recommendations to put more constraints on the gentleman's liquor license, and he just read the seven new ones to you. Compare last year's to this year and you'll see the difference.
And I don't know why he always gets the title gentleman, by the way. I, I report all this crime and corruption, and I'm called a no-good slug. Johnny Mac is called a gentleman, a spaller, the gift to Asbury, the savior, the benefactor. What, are you kidding me? Johnny Mac? What, what's the deal? Is it his money? What is it that makes this thing roll over here? It's dumb. It's nothing but a crime dump, a crime scene. You want anybody's kids to walk near that? I mean, what are we doing about this? The city manager knows nothing about it. Why don't we camp him at two thirty the weekend? Yeah, no, two thirty in the afternoon. You gotta be there at ten thirty at night till three in the morning to see what goes on in this city. It, it'll bring you to tears and fear at the same time. And the thing is, the people that you're putting to police all of this, they're part of it. They're part of it. I try and get police officers to, to get breathalyzers for driving while intoxicated, and they come at me like I'm, I'm some kind of commando from outer space. Well, look, I don't care if you're on the police force, and I don't care if you're related to all these people. If I watch you in a bar drink thirty drinks and then go out, piss in the street, get in your, I'm sorry, excuse me, get in your car, and just because you're an off-duty police officer, that's not gonna make it. And then when I do call the police and say, go get him, they say, well, you know, we rode by, we didn't see anything. Hello? They're all related. It's like nepotism and related back three generations. You know, one time somebody ought to be up here, prepared, not like me, emotional, but prepared, with all the data what's gone on here for forty years, and you're gonna see that this is a nepotistic crime scene.
Local.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two, two twenty-two, a resolution approving liquor license with special conditions for Porta Asbury LLC doing business as Porta for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen licensing year. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
And before we open up the Porta liquor license resolution to the public, given what just transpired with regard to Johnny Macs, I'll read these proposed new special conditions first, and then any member of the public can get up and comment. The new special conditions that council is considering placing on the Porta liquor license for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen licensing year include the following. The licensee shall hire two off-duty police officers during the months of October, November, December, January, February, and March on Friday and Saturday nights from ten thirty P M. until two thirty A M. The licensee shall hire four off-duty police officers during the month of April on Friday and Saturday nights from ten thirty P M. until two thirty A M. The licensee shall hire four off-duty police officers during the months of November, December, January, February, and March from ten thirty P M. until two thirty A M. when special events have been advertised or larger crowds are expected by way of example the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving and New Year's Eve. The licensee shall hire six off-duty police officers during the months of May through September on Friday and Saturday nights from ten thirty P M. until two thirty A M. During these times, at the sole discretion of the deputy chief, up to eight off-duty police officers may be required. Further, during these times, at the sole discretion of the deputy chief, up to two off-duty police officers of the total number to be provided may be provided in police vehicles. The licensee shall hire twenty-four security guards on Friday and Saturday nights. The licensee, in coordination with the police department, shall have private security and/or off-duty police officers to patrol the blocks west of Porta at the end of the night as patrons move to their cars and cabs. The licensee's private security shall not interact with patrons slash individuals, but shall report any concerns slash issues to the city police officers. The licensee shall eliminate sixteen-ounce mixed drinks from the club menu and serve mixed drinks in glass sizes no larger than twelve ounces. The security and bar staff shall clean sidewalks and curbs adjacent to the Porta property nightly after club nights and in the morning following club nights. The licensee shall install video surveillance signs inside and outside of the licensed premises to advise patrons and the public that, quote, "Warning: This property under video surveillance, you are being videotaped," end quote, or wording of similar import. The licensee shall include on their website, on social media platforms, flyers, and other forms of paper slash physical and digital advertisement that identification is required, that two forms of identification may be required, the type slash form of acceptable identification and the required dress code. The licensee shall use a movable sign to advise individuals online to enter the licensed premises that identification is required, that two forms of identification may be required, the type slash form of acceptable identification and the required dress code, as well as continuing to maintain the existing sign with the same information by the entrance to the licensed premises. The licensee shall require from the Friday evening on Memorial Day weekend through Monday evening on Labor Day weekend, a ten-dollar cover charge for entrance to the licensed premises starting at twelve o'clock midnight. The licensee shall prohibit any patron or person except for employees who leaves the licensed premises after one A M. from re-entering the licensed premises. A representative of the licensee and/or their security manager shall meet with or have a telephone call with the deputy chief of police on a monthly basis during the first week of each, each month. And finally, the deputy chief shall have the discretion to relax the foregoing conditions after consultation with and approval of the mayor and council and city manager, except as provided in condition four above. And those are all of the new special conditions the council is considering imposing on the renewal of the liquor license for Porta. And with that, would anyone from the public like to be heard regarding the renewal of the Porta liquor license with those conditions?
Lori Ross, one fifteen Dwood Avenue, West Side Community Center. Of course, my concern is that manpower, police man and woman power are taken away from other parts of the town, particularly those with high crime areas, like the West Side Community Center, and diverted over there to these for-profit, clearly for-profit businesses. My question particularly as it relates to Porta, has anybody checked with the county with regards to any alleged drugs going on in, in that establishment? Has anybody tracked the data on any, any crimes, loitering, urinating, fighting, controlled dangerous substances, vehicular issues? Also, when was the last time and what were the results of the fire code official visiting there? The tax assessor? A B C? Is, is, is there any data contained about the incidents? To include, I heard anecdotally, that folks are parking by the Parkway exit and they're getting transported en masse to Porta and the, some of these other establishments, and then they're getting back to the Parkway exit, um, the rest stop, and driving away drunk. So again, my concern is, particularly with this establishment and possibly the others too, has anybody been checking for, for, you know, some of the drug trafficking that's alleged at that establishment? Because I've heard a whole lot of stuff, but again, my concern is, you've got limited police resources, you probably have an understaffed police department, there are other high crime areas in the city, so while everybody's partying on the other side of town, you've got all this other stuff going on in the other parts of the town. So I know that we can track data, so is there any data with regards to that?
Yes, there are probably thirty questions and one big question, but obviously the data was tracked, and that's why some of these, uh, conditions were put on, because of the amount of calls, because of, uh, calling police from different sides, so the police numbers were upped. So yes, that was, we, we just didn't arbitrarily pull these numbers out, this was recommendations from the police department because of the amount of calls to this establishment.
So how long is it gonna be monitored after the fact? So you are gonna more than likely approve this, then what kind of monitoring mechanism? Are you gonna revisit this issue every quarter, or is it for the whole year? Once you say yes, they're good to go for a year, they'll party on this summer, and then next summer we'll go back to the drawing board?
If people make complaints, then we can revisit it.
Well, the only catch I'm gonna make to that is putting restrictions on the liquor license is for a year, and this is our one shot to do it.
So to my point, thank you Deputy Mayor Quinn. So this is their chance to get yes, and then next year it will be potentially revisited.
If there's problems over the course of the next year, we'll up the special restrictions again like we did this year.
I just hope we don't have any fatalities.
If there's major problems during the middle of the year, more restrictions, there could be another year.
The city can file charges against the licensed premises.
Right.
We don't have to wait till next July. There are continued incidents that happen after they place these conditions on the license.
So that's a good point, Mr. Raffetto. Have there been any charges with any of these establishments? I heard something about a propane tank and all of that, that seems like that's a violation that could potentially close some of these folks up. So like I said, all, my, my biggest concern is, is that we wanna make sure that the public is safe, whether they're residents or visitors, and again, to your point, Mr. Raffetto, have any complaints ever been filed by any of these establishments? Or against any of these establishments within the past few years?
I don't believe that the city has filed charges against the liquor license on any licensees in recent years. I know there was one going back a number of years regarding the fast lane that no longer exists, but not in recent years. The city has imposed special conditions at the time of renewal, which is right now, because the licensing year runs from July first of each year through June thirtieth of the year. And that's the appropriate time for special conditions to be imposed on a liquor license. However, if there are incidents that transpire during the course of the year, the, the remedy is for the, the city to file charges against the licensed premises, uh, to either seek a suspension or revocation of the liquor license, or to seek to impose additional special conditions, which would be subject to a hearing. But any special conditions have to relate directly to the service of alcohol and not be, um, the types of violations that could be addressed through other mechanisms, uh, such as through code enforcement or the fire official. If it goes to specifically, directly to the liquor license, then yes, but if there are other channels to address those types of violations, whether it be through the police department, code, fire, or whatnot, uh, those particular departments or agencies would handle those on a case-by-case basis.
And just because we have a governor that is on the opiate addiction issues and treatment and all of that, um, we've got prevention first in the county, there's children that actually live in these areas and live in the town, has there ever been a thought to, you know, get them engaged in some sort of alcohol awareness and? In terms of, you can't stop somebody that's twenty-one from drinking, but certainly we need to educate these young folks that this is not necessarily the best way to go, particularly when there are schools near the area, there's, you know, churches, the whole nine, and, and, you know, I don't know, if I were five years old, seven years old, twelve years old, if I lived in the central business district or near the central business district, near the waterfront, I'd be concerned about some of the stuff that I hear goes on that the next day children see. So there, there should be some emphasis on this town to educate these young folks to say, maybe we might wanna say prevention, that's all.
Uh, I just wanted to say, how come the hours are different for Johnny Mac and Porta? Johnny Mac is three A M. and Porta is two and two thirty, what's that about? Shouldn't they all be the same time? Isn't, isn't two o'clock the last time you can get a drink? I thought there was a two o'clock closing.
You're right, there is, yes, yes, there is two o'clock.
Well, it's, it's three o'clock for Johnny Mac.
Well, it's not, it's not closing at three o'clock, that's having the off-duty police officers stationed at the premises until three A M.
Till three o'clock?
Yes.
They say after.
At Johnny Macs.
Oh, and Porta's it's two and two thirty?
Two thirty.
How come?
These recommendations came from the police department.
Huh?
I said these recommendations came from the police department, so I presume they have a rationale for why they have the specific conditions relating to each premises, but they, they came directly from the police.
Ernest McEnally, Dale Lake Drive, Asbury Park. If I'm not sure, when Porta originally pitched this business to us, it was that it was gonna be a pizzeria, and it was gonna run kind of to like ten, eleven o'clock at night, and then they kinda looked around and said, wait a minute, you know, look at Bond Street, look at Ale House, look at Johnny Macs, you know- look at Ale House, look at Johnny Mac's, you know, let's run a nightclub and let's invite really dangerous people who want to do bad things from all over. And you know what? I know police chiefs in all surrounding towns, and they thank Asbury Park because everyone who used to do what they do here, there, now do it here. Bar A has no more prob, all these, they have some problems, but most of the serious drinkers, people looking to drive drunk, mix opioids, fight, now come here from Perth Amboy, we have the train service for them, they come in Ubers, they come in these big party vans where they park on the parkway. The driver was telling me, I make them sign a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar waiver because every time they come out of the bars, they're so drunk, they're puking all over my limousine. But then I bring them to the parkway and they get in their cars and they drive home. Hello, you know, they're killing people around here. And then when the sheriff sets up sobriety checkpoints here, they set it up in the parking lot, in the municipal lot, and who do they check? The people coming out of Allovers. I don't know, I mean, you know? And then we read in the paper, even the equipment they're using, sheriff's tampering with the equipment, the guy got caught, right? You wonder why, because you see all these people in these gin mills. I mean, liquor and alcohol, it's like it infected the world. And I'm not, you know, I'm not a, like a religious fanatic, it's just, it's crime and corruption, that's what it lends to. If you look at these other restaurants in Asbury, they're beautiful, look at how nice families come here, they have some drinks, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, they're done, they're going home. They're not looking to be around vomiting and beating up police and stuff, that's not what they're here for. You sit on Cookman and you look at ten o'clock on the weekends, and it's like the tide goes in and out, look at the clientele change. When you see what comes here at ten o'clock, they shouldn't even be allowed in the city. They should not, they come in here drunk and high, and then you add what they do here? How do we go in these bars? No registers working. How do you say, you know, I think you overserved that person? They come out of Johnny Mac's, they collapse from alcohol poisoning. The ambulance can't even get in there because they block up all the front with their cones and their employee barking. You ever watch it? I invite anybody here, come with me Friday and Saturday night between ten and three AM, you'll see something that'll make my hair stand out. It's unbelievable, and yet, it's approved, year after year after year. And I don't know how, but you name all these officers, private duty with weapons, doing their job there, why do we need six or eight police cars to be pulled from everywhere else? I've never seen a night with as many, six, eight, ten police cars pulled from the west side, the north side, everywhere else to help these guys under siege. It's, how's that fair? I can't even get a patrol schedule. You ever try and talk to Salerno or Kelso? I want to know about the north, north end. Are they patrolling? You know, I'm a victim of violent crime, I have to walk in the dark. Well, we can't tell you that. Sure, they're all, they're all, you know where they are. Mayor, please, somebody's got to come and watch it. I documented, I used to send stuff to the national news. I sent a double-arm robbery at Porta last year. Double-arm robbery on either side of Porta. It aired on national news. I didn't see anything happen. What happened? Nothing, I mean, you know, all we lack, we have police officers on the run. We just had a, what, a fifteen-year police officer cooperating with gangs? This is German, they just got him in, in North Carolina. All of a sudden, he was a bad guy on one day? How about the seventeen years he worked here, giving up all our information, telling all the gangs where the police are?
Okay, Ernest, keep it to the, no, you can keep on talking, but keep it to the Porta license.
Well, where do you think he did his business? All his prostitutes were from that area. What do we, why that song? Where do you think all the prostitutes and drug addicts are around here? Johnny Mac's, Bond Street, Porta, and the transportation center. And then we have other police officers picking them up off the ground and forcing them to have sex like Martinez. Where's he now? Martinez? These police officers, I mean, something, I don't know, like some kind of rational emotive therapy or something, they just, they can't control their addictions and it's, you know, read the newspaper, am I making this up? You know they just caught German now, right? In North Carol, you don't know, city manager doesn't know. A fugitive, an Asbury Park fugitive that endangered this whole community.
We're not talking about that.
And they just apprehended her.
Stick, stick, stick on Porta, please. All right, we're talking about the restrictions placed on Porta.
It is Porta. Porta, Porta and Johnny Mac and Bond Street caused all this.
Okay.
They're one and the same, and now they're trying to connect under Cookman and tunnels. You ever been in the, there's an underground tunnel thing that they're digging.
All right, thank you.
Oh, you got to go in the tunnels, Your Honor. It's, I mean, Mayor, it's a great thing, I hear you go down there, it's like nothing else, they got like these special stalagmites and stalactites.
Thank you for your comments, thank you.
Why, are you cutting me off?
Well, you're straying from the subject, Ernest, we're...
What's straying from the subject?
Because we're talking about Porta and you're bringing about North Carolina that I don't know what I know, so how do you know what I know and I don't know? So stick to...
Well, I asked you if you know they just apprehended.
And you didn't give me a chance to answer, I wasn't going to answer. Yeah, I saw it on the news this morning, I read the newspaper every day. You can come to my house, I'll give you my home phone number, I don't know what else to give you.
How did he work here for seventeen years?
That has nothing to do with the Porta license.
Right.
Well, you know, Ms. Quinn, you finally said something, I appreciate it.
Okay.
From your campaign headquarters at Johnny Mac, you finally said something. Good for you.
We have a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second. We had one.
Roll ball.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen-two-twenty-three, resolution authorizing purchase of vehicle for building department, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen-two-twenty-four, resolution authorizing the purchase of parking pay station. Can I have a motion to move, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen-two-twenty-five, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to enter into a memorandum of agreement with sponsors of the city's bike station, bike share system. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember, Member Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two-twenty-six, resolution approving change order number one for Sunset Lake Flip Bridge contract to T M Associates. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen-two-twenty-seven, resolution of the mayor, city council of the city of Asbury Park, authorizing the execution of easements and other documents and furtherance of the redevelopment and land disposition agreement and ground lease with Michael's Development Company as a redevelopers of certain parcels located within City Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance is for introduction, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-one, mending and supplementing Chapter Two Administration, Section two dash forty-seven, point seven, Terms of Service, Sunset Lake Commission of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance, introduce, two thousand seventeen thirty-two, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use of handicapped persons of property located at ten thirty-four and a half Soul Avenue Apartment B in the city of Asbury Park in amending and supplementing Section seven dash thirty-six entitled Handicap Parking, Chapter Seven, Traffic of the Revision Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-three, an ordinance authorizing the city of Asbury Park to convey an easement over certain portions of right-of-way airspace adjacent to the property located at seven hundred Bangs Avenue, Block twenty-five oh eight, Lot Two. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
This ordinance is scheduled for public hearing on July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-four, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending traffic and parking regulations, Chapter Seven, Section twenty. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Second reading, public hearing, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section four dash one Business Licenses by adding subsection four dash one point ten Sale of Animals of Chapter Four, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public, please?
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm looking to get a vegan pizza at...
State your name and address, please.
Yes. Brian Hackett, New Jersey State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. Our business address is seven hundred Professional Drive in Gaithersburg, Maryland. Our mailing address here is P.O. Box two-four-eight in Helmeta, New Jersey. I'm a New Jersey resident, and I'll be very brief because as I started out saying, I want to go get a vegan pizza at Toluas. So I want to thank the mayor and council for pushing this ordinance ahead. We've heard a lot of different issues going on tonight in the city. This is a proactive preventative ordinance. It's going to prevent problems from happening. We've seen a lot of towns recently in New Jersey and Brick and Paramus and East Hanover, East Brunswick, they have these horrible pet stores where they're selling dogs and cats from puppy mills and kitten mills. These animals are not socialized, they have behavioral problems. A lot of these stores have predatory lending practices where you're virtually leasing a pet. It's really sickening. So luckily, Asbury Park doesn't have any current pet stores, but this is to prevent them from opening and selling cats or dogs from puppy mills. So this is something that Monmouth County supports, over a hundred municipalities in New Jersey have already passed this. So without taking any more time, I want to leave this very brief, concise pet store report with the council and mayor, just a review for your perusing about New Jersey's pet stores. So I thank you for this and encourage you to vote yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending traffic and parking regulations, Chapter Seven, Sections eleven and sixteen. Can I have a motion to open this ordinance to the public?
Move it. Second. Oh, this is a traffic law, I think they have a lot of...
Seeing no public comment, can I have a motion to close, please?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Move it, oh, yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, vacating an unnamed alleyway measuring fifteen feet located east of Dunlue Street in Block eighteen oh one, as shown on Sheet eighteen of the official tax map of the city of Asbury Park. Can I have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second. Motion to close?
Move it. Second.
Rita wants to speak.
What are you doing here? Is that the alleyway? Is that the ordinance?
It will vacate an unnamed alleyway which is perpendicular to Dunlue Street. It's a fifteen-feet-wide unused right-of-way.
It's what?
It's an unused right-of-way. It's not used by the city. The governing body has determined there's no longer a need for the city to have that area.
So it's going to be removed or in?
The area's being vacated.
On Dunlue Street?
There's a, there's a map that's attached to the Porta.
The alleyway's probably here a hundred years. So now they're saying the topic's a need, don't they use it? Is that it?
The city has made a determination that it no longer serves any public purpose, the city does not need it. It potentially is a liability to the city and they're vacating the city's interest in the property.
So is that just one piece of property?
It's a, it's a fifteen-foot-wide alleyway that only runs the length of the lots that are on the, I think, the north side of the block between Dunlue and Central Avenues.
So I've been a lot of properties here. Did this, the, what, the zoning board, like, can they just do that? Can you just do that here? With the alleyway?
An alleyway vacation does not need to go before either the planning or zoning board.